And start and.
Yeah.
I know. If she's able to, if she's able to make it, I'm sure she will.
All right, we're live.
All right, it's six thirty-one. So we'll start with our pledges to the place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge.
I also pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Close. Sorry, we touched that, Texas. All right, can we have a roll call?
All right, Commissioner Ignatik?
Here.
Commissioner Heinemeier, here? Are you here? No.
No.
Mayor Nolan?
Here.
We have a forum.
We do have a forum. We'll call this meeting to order. Under announcements, I do have a check report. Nothing too unusual here. We did get sales tax receipts, twenty-nine sixty-five, twenty-one. That seems a little low, however, compared to last year. At this time, it's a little above. So there are some months that are historically have been a little bit lower than others. We had some Texas file in there from doing record searches. And we continue to crank up some interest in the accounts. So our total across all funds is two-hundred-and-twelve dollars, six-hundred, two-hundred-and-twelve, six-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and ninety-one cents. I have, that is for, I have something for later. I don't believe I have any other announcements that are not on the agenda already. Allison usually has something, but we have nothing on the agenda. Is that right? The pop-up?
Well, I don't know that it's on the agenda, but she would probably want to mention that.
That we do have the, did you happen to put that on the?
I did.
As an event? Okay, good.
Yeah. Yeah.
This Friday, downtown Kingsbury, we have a full moon, pop-up dinner happening.
Night market.
And night market, and they're playing a couple of movies as it gets later.
Yeah, I saw that. I saw that on the last, on the last, on the Facebook page.
Yeah, come on by. You can find the event on the Kingsbury Facebook page.
I did, and I just will say, I've gotten a lot of response back from, you know, the, as things go through the process, the removal from C D E T J that I give, I'm getting a lot of calls and texts from people saying so-and-so has gotten their letter back from C D E, she got a letter. And, but I haven't gotten mine yet. Am I in yet? Like, you'll get it. You will get it. So that's all going through this process. And more to come. Public comments. Anything, you have the Grant Works on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay. So anything to, that isn't already on the agenda? All right. Oil business consent agenda items, approval of the May twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, regular commission meeting minutes. Anything from there that needs to be moved to the, off the consent agenda and on the regular agenda?
In my opinion, no.
All right, those will stand. Item number five, discuss and consider applications for the community development block grant, C D B G, twenty-five dash twenty-six. This one's for Jessica Gardner.
Okay, so this is, this is the grant that, well, that Margaret's here to talk to us about. Do you want to?
Well, I, I know that Michael came and asked you all about participating in this program. And his, I guess I. After.
This is my department.
So. When you want to apply, you know, your next step is to hire those services that you need to write that, someone write the application. You would have to have an engineer to do the design of your project, whatever you chose to do. And then administrative services help you write the application. And then also do implementation of your project if you're awarded the grant. So that's kind of the next step. You have to go through procurement processes. It's what is required by federal law, or if you get any federal funds, you have to, and want to hire those services, then you have to go through the process. So R F E is request for proposals for administrative services. And then the R F Q is qualifications for engineers. That's basically what we are bringing to you tonight is the approved authorization to, to start that process.
And this is for the, just the, just one particular grant or?
This is, this is just one particular grant. This is a community development block grant fund. It's administered by the Department of Agriculture, Texas Department of Agriculture. And it is, the community development block grant program has a number of grant programs in them, but this is for the community development fund for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. It's a biennial, a biennial funding. You apply, you put one application in, and they rank them in and fund what they can for two years, twenty-five, twenty-six. And they have a new, a new process this year of the phase one and phase two. And I, I suppose Michael will explain that to y'all. You are going to put in a phase one application that basically talks about what your community needs are, what your priority is going to be, and to commit to your match. That's, that's part of the program. And then T D A will look at those, score those, rank them, and then they will invite those that can continue to the next step to actually put in a full application.
Okay. So is it, so what's our next step on this? Is it? Is it what?
Well.
Grant Works, is it with us?
Did I miss when Michael was here?
So he came and had a little meeting with me, but I guess I kind of thought he would come in and, and give a whole presentation to everybody.
Okay.
So.
Well, I, for you, for you to move forward with R F Bs, that is, that is for you to make that decision if you're going to do that. And as you know, requests for proposals and requests for qualification must be published in a newspaper that you're, that you use. So you do that process. It's not something that any of us can do because we can't help you with that part.
Right.
We are allowed to give you the information that you need for the R F Bs. But that, that would be the next step. And then once you select those service providers, then when you give more information, we can provide more information for you.
And when we talk about service providers, I mean, are we basically talking about hiring Grant Works? Is, if, if that's how it?
What we ask for Grant Works is that you do send us the request for proposals. But you do have to send them out to a number of providers.
Okay. E?
So I have a question because I was not here, been absent for a while. What is the city of Kingsbury's goal with the application of the grant?
Well, you know, I, I don't really think that we've talked about it at length.
Is there a copy of the particular grant that we're talking about?
I'm familiar with the, with the community block grants from T D A. I'm just kind of curious. What is, what purpose would they serve or benefit, do they serve for the city of Kingsbury? How would?
You go ahead, but I have a follow-up question, kind of like you did. That I wanted to ask Margaret about. I have, I've seen community block grants from the Department of Agriculture down in Three Rivers. I represent the Economic Development Corporation, and they would get C D B block grants. But the ones, it seems, I'm trying to remember, I think the only thing we used it for that the City, that the Economic Development Corporation was actually funding a loan to a business, a new business, startup business in Three Rivers. So are the, that's all I've ever seen C D B used for. So I was wondering if that, is that true, or there's, and so what are our options? I think that's one of the things that Kingsbury would like to add from the consultant is what are, what types of options of grants or uses? Because we ask for a block grant, right, but then we have to be very specific about what we want to do or build.
Typically, the S O W, the summary of work, in any type of grant is going to have benchmarks, timelines. It's going to be very structured out. You're going to have, you're going to have to state, you know, you're going to meet phase one by X date, and you're going to have to send in that report. And then you're going to have phase two, you know, whatever, da-da-da-da-da, throughout the entire lifespan of that, of that funding, so for that biennial in the rivers. I see here that it looks like water system improvements, wastewater system improvements, road and street improvements, drainage improvements, and gas system improvements are the eligible activities.
That's what federal's on the agenda.
Right. So this is, these are just a few of what are eligible activities in this program. So if I can answer first question, economic development you saw was from an economic development fund program. This is not, this is a community development fund program. So every, every grant program they have is for something different.
Activities, right. And that's why, that's what, that's why I was asking the city of Kingsbury, what is that?
So the, your COG, the other part of ACOG, your COG sets the priorities for this program. And the COG has said, they've set water sewer, septic tanks, first-time service warrants, and sewer yard lines as the first priority. You almost have to apply for something with the first priority in order to get enough funds.
Just to get interest.
To be funded. So that would be something if you had those type activities that you needed, water sewer improvements in a, in a community or, well, that's basically why you, you needed septic tanks, they do septic tanks. And then first-time services are water and sewer yard lines. Like if you had an area in your community that didn't have water or sewer, and you had a sewer system or water system that you wanted to connect into, that would pay for that. So those are the number one priority. There are number two priority, which is roads.
Road and drainage.
Improve, road and drainage improvements, but it's number two, so it doesn't get us any points as number one. So those are things I can't talk to you specifically about projects at this point.
Right.
Where I am.
Right, and I wasn't asking you specifically.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
But those are, those are what ACOG has chosen to be the priority for ACOG.
Okay. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, I see we have our tasks set out to.
Yeah, we might need to workshop.
We're a long way, I think, from meeting your.
Even to begin to apply.
Yeah.
Although you have.
But we've, we've been wanting something like this to get started for a long time. So we're just trying to, Jessica's kind of pushing us and getting us going in the right direction. And so we can get the, get the wheels rolling on, on things like this, not just C D B G, but you know, the whole grant process, because we're a small city, we don't have CARBET Act. And so grants are certainly a, an option for funding things that we'd like to do in our community.
Right. So I'll let you know, the process continues from here. And, and you do have, have time to consider what it is you want to do. The phase one application that right now, you're estimating that it will be due in early spring. So you have.
Twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty, twenty-three. Yeah.
Okay.
And then if you're invited for full application, it would, it would come later. Like they're talking maybe August next year. But, well, when we come to a community and touch a community, we want you to know that you have help available for it to do these things. It's what we do. And I, I'm sorry, you know, maybe we should back up. Grant Works has been in this business for forty-four years, been writing grants and applications and managing grant programs and projects for communities or the, so that's, that's what we like to do, is we like to come and see if the community has need. And then if there's a way we can help you fill it, then we want to do that, we can. When these programs come available, we look at communities that, that have an opportunity and cannot be able to receive funding. And so we like to let you know of the program, and then we kind of let you take it from there. You make the decision about whether you're going to authorize to go out for your R and P and your R and Qs. And again, because we want to be considered, to be hired for that, that part of your application and to do implementation of your grant, we can give you so much information, but we can't do it for you until that, the point that you hire so much to do. But we'll give you all, we can give you all the information. We're allowed to give you information, but that's all until we're hired.
And then we have to be.
Yeah, and then, then we get into specifics.
Okay.
I see on phase one, it says public hearing and resolution. So I guess would, would the public hearing be?
That's a, that, excuse me. Wouldn't that be, once we have something definite in mind for the use of the grants?
Okay, and then we would invite the public to?
I mean, that we can actually apply for.
We have a project.
Yeah, a project to apply for.
The public hearing allows the community to come in and, and discuss any needs that they think that they would likely reconsider.
Okay.
And the city also can, you know, discuss that, of what you're needing. That you can, you have a public hearing for the public to participate in that process.
So they would be helping us determine what, what we want the grant to go to?
Yes.
Okay. So. So tonight, we're deciding to, do we want to write the R F P and R F Q, right?
The city is authorizing to issue R F Bs and RFQs for those purposes.
Okay.
I'm calculating that color, so you're not ready for that stage yet. You're not even ready for that stage yet. You need to, the city of Kingsbury needs to figure out what they want to do. And start from there.
Okay. Yes. All right, well, how do y'all want to handle this?
It's, I mean, you don't even have to apply this cycle. It can be looked at for next cycle. This is done every biennial, so.
Well, I mean, we're talking about.
If, I only say that if you need time.
Year, right? So it seems like we should be.
And now's the time. That'd be fine, but, yeah, we.
This needs to be vetted. This, yeah, this really needs to be vetted even before you begin the, just, even before you download the application. But there's, there's, and, and I'm going to say that because I work with state grants and federal grants. So this, in my day, in my day life, so, yeah, there needs to be a clear plan from the city of Kingsbury as to the purpose, the goals it's going to meet, how it's going to be beneficial, demographics, statistics. So there's quite a bit in here that goes into these, because you're going to, you're competing with many others like you.
Yeah.
And if you want that money, you're going to have to come up with your best foot, footage. It's most, most professional and polished, and you want, you're going to want your stats and data. Is it value-added and all those kinds of things, R F P I, Lincoln Sigma, those things.
Sounds great to me.
I think as Michael probably told you, Jessica, I mean, Grant Works pre-scores when it's time for application. We pre-score a lot of communities to see where they stand with an opportunity of funding. And Kingsbury is scoring really well. It's because you haven't received these in the past. Because one of the biggest points getter, point-getters is if you haven't received them in over three cycles, which is six years, then you get the most, you'll have the most, most points. So, but, but to, if you move forward with anything, if you move through R F P and hire a, a provider like Grant Works to help you, we can help you with that process. Go through, like she said, anything that you want to look at as far as the grant is concerned. You know, we, as, I think as Michael told you too, and he's put it in here, you, we'll have fees for services, but if you don't get funded, then you won't be paying us a ser, you won't pay a fee. You don't pay anything. So.
Could you give us, give us a rub as to what the pay actually is?
Well, they, the program itself has a cap on the funds. They can be, and I will, I'm going to give you the amount that it is for right now. Right now, the grant maximum is five-hundred-thousand dollars. And they're talking about raising that possibly to six-hundred-thousand dollars. We don't know yet because that's with T D A. But the cap for administrative services is fifty-five thousand for that grant. And the cap for engineering is seventy-five thousand. But that money comes from your grant fund and what you will need, would need to put in for your match. And a city of your size has a two percent match, so a ten-thousand dollars match.
Okay. Well, do you think, is this just something we need to have some time and?
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of a, a new trust, and so just to get started, like that's one thing is, is next step. Just to get the process started and we'll, you can see how it goes. And what we need to do, and what we can, what we could use funds for, what we can use the funds for, what we should use the funds for, what people have ideas to use the funds for. And then do all the, like E says, you know, all the, all the legwork to get that going, so.
Because the community.
The community input would be something that the K D C committee would, would head up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
But, but before we even make that sales pitch, what are we doing? What are we selling?
Well, I mean, it seems like.
So, and it doesn't have to be answered right now. I'm just saying that I don't, I don't think, I think this, this topic number five needs to be tabled for another day, once, once some kind of consensus comes down.
You know, given by Grant Works is, and so I, I don't know, I, I'm not trying to push anybody into anything faster than I want.
Absolutely. I mean, we've talked about this literally for, for years, you know, trying to get this process started and get to going on, you know, the grants that, that are available to us that we could use and put to use in the community. So this is, this is good. I mean, we're, we're, to, to make that effort and get this, get this process started and work through it at least once, and, and with Grant Works, we can, we have somebody to help with that process. So we just need to know, I guess, what to do next. I guess, at, at some point, we need to workshop and see, you know, what, what our action plan should be for determining what we want to do, getting the community, getting the K D C involved and, and what we can, input we can get from the community and, and then start pursuing it step by step.
You said the greatest, one of the more persuasive applicator presentations on our end is with Alamo Area Council Government's priorities. And their priorities, you said, were sewer, water, water and sewer. Water and sewer, and, okay. But that, not required, it's just that kind of, or is it?
If you, if you, I will tell you, as, as for historical value, if you go to a second priority project, you probably won't receive enough points to make that. So, you know, that's, that's the thing that, that's why they set priorities. And that's, I think Michael brought that too. He, he brought that to you, to Jessica, what the priorities were. So priority one, projects or water and sewer system improvements, septic tanks, if, if people need septic tanks, first-time warrants and sewer yard lines. Priority two are road streets and drainage. And then priority three are all other eligible projects, which there's a huge amount. But the difference in points is quite a bit, you know, for priority one.
Yeah, he would advise us to stick with water and sewer.
We have to accumulate, we have to spend Alamo Area ACOG, and then we move down the line to?
No, you're going to turn in an application, and they'll be scored off at, at T D A. They have, they know what each project's priority is. We have twenty-four COGs in the state. And so T D A knows what their priorities are, and so they, they will automatically assess, I think it's the priority projects for fifty points, priority one project. So they will, they assess those points. We have a, and this is kind of getting into more details, then y'all need to know them as well. But there's a unified scoring committee that sets up some of the other points that you get. That has to do with poverty and other things that are basically set through census information. I don't know if I have that with me, what all the questions are.
That's okay. Got the idea there.
So, and then two, these, these grants serve, at most are fifty-one percent of our minority in a person. And that's another thing that we would have to establish at, you know, again.
Yeah, the demographics and, yeah.
Right. Is that if you had that.
We have gotten that before. I know. I'm not sure where that information came from. I guess census information. But turns out, we had some, some, some people that kind of skewed it out of the lower demographic reach. We don't have that many, but apparently there was enough to kind of skew the, skew the numbers a little bit. But, but I don't know what the witness is.
Yeah, those, those are things that a, a service provider can, can help you with when you go through the process to hire.
Okay. So let's, we're not tabling, let's make sure we have this on agenda for next time. And I do, maybe in the meantime, we'll need to either workshop some of this or?
I would like a workshop.
Yeah, yeah. I can, I could see a workshop and certainly communication about what, as we, as we figured it.
Yeah.
Do you want to set a workshop for the next month?
I'm okay with that, but everybody's busy.
Yeah. Oh, well, next month is barbecue. You know, so that's, I mean, it's the last Saturday in July, so, but. A part of the month is certainly a busy.
Oh, yeah, that's the end of the month.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, certainly a busy period of time there, but.
We can set a workshop for next week.
Yeah, why does it have to be next month?
Yeah, we can do it next week.
Weekend or weekday?
Sure, let me look at my.
Evening, morning?
Yeah, because in July, we got the Fourth of July, and then we got. And then we got barbecue.
I wouldn't say more than two hours.
The barbecue is the big fundraiser for the barbecue.
For our workshop.
It's a significant event.
And there are very many, falls your body.
Yes. You know how important it is.
It is important.
And a lot of work.
Well, do y'all want to do next Monday? Um, I mean, I guess it'd be good to get Allison involved.
It's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, would you rather do earlier in the day?
I could wake it up at three-thirty every day, every morning.
Well, I don't want to come.
If it's too early, okay.
On Monday, yeah, I mean, it would have to be later in the day since I'm.
Right, you're going to be working.
Yeah.
Um, what time would be good for you? Do you want to just do six thirty? Want to do six?
Six thirty's fine.
Six thirty?
Yeah, six.
Six?
Six.
Monday at six?
Monday at six.
Can you tell me the date of Monday?
Yeah, seventeen forty-seven. Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, six P M?
June.
Here?
Yes.
Six P M?
And I should put out like a public notice.
Six, uh, six o'clock.
Six o'clock. You sure can.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll need a notice for all of them.
And invitation to attend.
Is that, no, that's not Allison.
Again.
Yeah, she can work on so much.
So, this is to discuss possible uses for the grants.
Right, right. And what, again, like what are next steps?
Community development block grant.
And in the meantime, Jessica, send you the, the scoring criteria for the, that the unified scoring committee sets. So, you already know all ACOG sets, it's just your priorities.
Yeah, because I mean, it's, you know, from what you're saying, if it, if we're not working on a, on a P one type opportunity, it's a wasted time.
So, that, we have, the ACOG lists the priorities. Unified scoring committee has, um, I think they have a hundred and thirty points that they make up. And then you also get some scoring from, uh, TDA. But those are basically past performance issues or, uh, you know, uh, if what you've done in other grants, how, how many times you've had those grants that you've made up. And, uh, since you haven't had very much history with the program, you probably would get all those points. But so, you, you have an opportunity here if you have the, the, before the, the funding. We, we would surely hope that you would look for that and go towards doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, cool.
If we get our stuff together, we'll call you.
You can also call Michael, just, just, uh, not this week, because he'll be, he's a Z out of town for this week. But you can give him a call at a time and if you have any questions or do.
Okay, and then make sure we have, do have it on, you know, agenda for next month for sure, and then.
Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for helping us.
My fault, I should have made a fault.
But we have to like grease the skids a little bit and get, get into the process and see how it works and.
Maybe you think after this workshop, we might want to hold a public hearing next month? Or is that too soon?
So, you're gonna?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I appreciate y'all letting me kind of take some of your time to talk about the program.
Thank you.
Nice, thanks for coming out.
We appreciate you very much.
Where are you based in?
I, I, I live in Lee, which is just outside of Austin.
Yeah.
Yeah, Austin is a headquarters, uh, for Grant Works.
Mm-hmm. And, uh.
So, we're in your area of your business?
You're, you're very close to where I've been. I, I've been doing, I've, I've been doing grants for about twenty-seven years. So, I've been, I was living at another firm for twenty-five years and working with Grant Works. So, I, that's, that's what I've been doing most of my work life.
Okay.
So, uh, that's your area.
All right, awesome. All right, we'll try and get this going on our side too. Well, we're a little, we're slow at this, you know, because we've never actually got this all rolling before. But, uh, we're, this is, uh, Jessica's really been trying to get us, get us going on this. Appreciate it.
If, any, any other information you can just let us know. And we'll try to answer the questions that we can at this point. Thank you, thank y'all very much.
Uh, any more on that topic? Our agenda item? All right, item number six, it's let's discuss and consider Kingsbury Development Committee Report and Discussion. Anything, E?
Um, good evening, I don't have a report for you. Um, I've been, as you know, I've been out of pocket for the last few months due to, um, shift and work and professional requirement. Uh, so, the last I recall where we left off, we, the committee had requested any information regarding, um, future activity funding as well as, um, the results from the social back in February. How did the committee feel about that? The commission feel about, about that? We think it was success. How can we, um, improve upon that? And then what, um, what percentage for the, um, ETJ project? What percentage of the core of Kingsbury would the city of Kingsbury consider a success? Um, sec-, a success from where we were pre, um, hot chocolate social to post? As far as the number of, of properties removed from the ETJ, I'm just.
We have, we've done, um, what did I say last time? Uh, seventy-seven, uh, uh, properties, uh, that have been removed. Uh, I honestly think what we need to go for is the, is the, I have the list of registered voters in precinct one. Um, and if you get five percent of voters on a petition, then an election can be held that we don't have to pay for. And then a whole area can be renovated if percent of the voting, voters do agree on it. Um, I mean, if, when you look at the math, it's little, little pieces here and there. Um, we have the opportunity through S B twenty thirty-eight to do a swap. And I, I would love to see a swap.
So, so is that the, the, the change of direction for, for the city of Kingsbury to move from just doing individual to the pushing for the elec-, for the election?
I don't know if it's a change in direction, but it, it is the, another prong, uh, that I think could be pursued. You know, we can certainly keep doing pieces here and there. Um, but, but I think, uh, I think that an election would go over and then that would.
Let me ask, the election is just a road for the ETJ, okay? I think, I think it's a lot of people who are just not concerned enough to, even fill out a petition.
Yeah.
You know, he's.
You only need five percent.
I know, and that, that would be, I don't think anybody would show, I don't think, uh, very many people would show up to vote against it either.
Uh-uh.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
They'd be like, oh, that'd be a good thing.
What did we have to think through with, yeah, after our petition drive, we ended, you know, having the election, we had, what, ninety-seven percent vote for, so.
So, if, if that's the direction, then I think the committee, like speaking, again, I'm going to circle back to facilitate back to my perspective and, and discussion topic. Then I think the committee could assist in providing the promotion vote properly or whatever it is, you know, whatever slogan or marketing, both mailer and then maybe some flyers around. Maybe, you know, those little stand-up cards and things like that, so. Um, um, uh, so I guess, uh, let me know what the ultimate decision is so then I can figure out how to rustle up the committee members because they've been dispersed pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing that I've been wanting, that, that the committee's been requesting since January has been, um, a listing of activities similar to what the Kingsbury file department have here. You see, they got the full year laid out and they've got certain dates of things. So, they can look throughout the whole year. That's kind of the whole purpose of the activity calendar, is try to get that input. Um, so, we're looking to see, to, A, identify what activities are on the calendar, already pre-existing, outstanding. And then how can the committee be able to utilize pre-existing community events to educate, create awareness and those types of things? So, any information you could provide to us regarding, um, activities, events, things that, you know, like, do we know what weekend, um, um, the, the November fall fly-in is? You know, that would be helpful, we could get that on the calendar. Right, and those kinds of things, those are, that's information that would be helpful to us. We just don't have enough of that. The folks that I've asked to do that on the committee, they are not savvy enough to obtain all of that information. So, I'm asking that directly of the committee to be able to provide that to, uh, excuse me, of the commissioners to provide some information of dates of activities, um, beyond what's happening this month and next month. I'm looking all the way six months from now. Um, so then that way, I, we can start figuring out where we can assist as far as the committee and hold our purpose.
Think back in twenty fourteen, twenty eighteen, twenty fourteen, we had like a booth at the fire department.
And that's, and those, those, those are great things.
For petitions.
Yeah, and that's, and that's exactly what I'm talking about to be able, but I need to know, when are those dates? So, we can plan for them.
Yeah.
Like, I don't, I don't, I don't know when those dates are.
July, April.
I mean, the fire, the fire department is always.
Yeah, I know.
But what about any other events?
But, no, I'm, I'm trying to think of, of those kinds of things, so.
I'm, it's a ton, I don't know.
There's not a ton.
But maybe I'm just not aware of them because I don't get out much either.
Yeah, I mean, we missed the spring line.
So, anyway, if you have some of those, those, that information, that would be very helpful. If you could send it in an email, send us, uh, a note, um, a text, that would be helpful. Put it on the message board, we could just.
Weren't most of these dates on the, the Google calendar on the website?
The next thing coming up is fire, fire review, right? That is the next thing.
Yeah, that's, that's the big next thing, yeah, that's, that's done.
Until next year's five.
Till December, yeah, that would be helpful.
I'll go over it.
January, yeah, sounds good to me. That would be helpful, that would be very, very helpful and we can, then that way, we can plan and organize ourselves and be prepared to be able to do those kinds of things. And in lieu of doing, um, promoting, you know, the petition, here's your paperwork, we can actually do that there on site and then put them all together, then come to get notarized later or work, work. Or we also had a volun-, another volunteer who's a notary, a local resident, who also volunteered her notary participation. I'll reach out to her, get her to be part of that as well. So, then that frees up the mayor's hands from having to do so much of it. And I'm trying to, trying to delegate, enlighten some of the load and carry some of the responsibilities. But that also means that I need your help, being able to understand what those dates are, what those activities are, what are the priorities? Um, and then identify how the committee can continue to be of value. Um, and run with the King, the commission's strategic plan, which I still don't know what that is. But I, I still, I still want to help with whatever those strategic goals are. But I, I can't do anything until I, what I know, until you tell me what those are or share that information. So, I'm still waiting. Um, but, um, that's all that's happening in the committee at this time. Subject to any comments, questions or concerns, that's all I have.
I have comments, later, concerns also.
All right.
I have, now I have a request of y'all at our workshop next week, is it next week? If I can carve out fifteen minutes just for what happens in Kingsbury throughout the year. And barbecue, fall, fall harvest, uh.
Fall flying.
Fall flying, that's in fall.
National night out.
National, what day, what month is that, October?
October.
National, okay.
Tuesday?
The flying, is it fall flying or is?
There's spring and fall. It's May and November, but I just don't know what dates those are.
It's the same November as the fall harvest, that's right.
Halloween.
There's Halloween.
The trunk or treat.
Trunk or treat.
We're going to be trunk or treat Halloween? October, it's even giving it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Not want to do it now, but we'll do it. Fifteen minutes at the workshop?
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll get a list.
Thank you.
I'll answer your questions.
That's right.
All right, item number seven, discuss and consider and update plans for the Kingsbury Municipal Waste Transfer Station. Surely not, so. Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Um, I got, I was talking with Commissioner Seidenberger, uh, weekly, uh, regarding this. On my last, he texted me a couple of days ago. Uh, they do have it for an item of discussion on the commissioner's court tomorrow, uh, discussion. So, item number six on the county commissioner's court, uh, agenda. The county-owned property located at fifty-eight twenty Old Ciggy and Luling Road, that's, that's all it is. But that's what that is. Now, uh, what Commissioner Seidenberger has told me, um, this is his message to Ty, is that they had the, was it Amnesty Day?
Was it Jimmy, the dog turd picket?
Or delivery, I don't think it was a.
Oh, yeah, it was drop, yeah, drop off.
Collection, it was a collection.
Right. And he said that they're, you know, as far as the county, they're giving a lot of pushback to this idea of City of Kingsbury using, uh, that particular, uh, site for, for this and taking over, you know, municipal waste transfer.
Who's pushing that?
Commissioner's Court. Um, uh, it's on the agenda for next Tuesday, a lot of discussion because he thinks they may, uh, they, they may, he thinks maybe some pushback to reopen that facility. Uh, the first county-wide cleanup day last Saturday went well. Five hundred and forty-two vehicles dropped off discarded items. So, some commissioners have voiced to him that, uh, you know how, you know how autocorrect does. That, that is the way we should go. But in favor of allowing your volunteers to run a municipal waste collection service for them. But in favor of allowing your volunteers, uh, municipal waste collection for the public. Let me see, so I think, uh, county-wide cleanup, okay. Uh, oh, and so I asked him how often this county-wide cleanup, and he's talking about once per quarter. So, uh, once again, they, they are determining that the municipal waste location here in Kingsbury, um, is not for, really, that it doesn't work out for people trying to just, you know, household waste. They don't think that that is a, a good use of the, uh, facilities. I, I don't know that that's the case, but there is, again, a discussion tomorrow at commissioner's court. I probably will not be able to make that. Their pressure court is at ten o'clock usually? Yes, ten o'clock, and it's one of the first things. They have a presentation and then a public hearing about Schwab Road and that. So, it's, uh, going to be an uphill climb, uh, to continue to try and pursue this? Um, is it, in your opinion? And just, and the people in here, there's a lot of people affected by this, but in your opinion, here, is it, uh, worth running the facility a number of days a week if they can, if there is a quarterly, what they call an Amnesty Day, or a large trash drop-off kind of day? Just in your.
In my opinion, okay. I, I would prefer the dump, or the collection center here in Kingsbury to operate like it did. I need a place to take large bulky items that I can't put in my trash can, you know, and have picked up. And I don't really want to have to haul them all the way across the county.
Well, that.
And I, I like being able to take it when I have it instead of.
What we were looking at here was household trash.
I know, and I, I don't have a problem with the household trash collection I have.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm wary, I'm waiting to see what, uh, Waste Connections is going to end up doing. I found out today that most of the employees from Superior do not stay with them.
Well, I know that, uh, uh, someone I know that on Old, Old Ciggy and Luling, they had Beth's Waste Collection. They got bought by Waste Connections. Then I had Superior, they got bought by Waste Connections. So, are.
Waste Connections.
Huh?
It's all Waste Connections.
It's all Waste Connections nowadays.
And all Waste Management too.
Waste Management is the other. Waste management is the other, different company and they're worse.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean...
So I mean, we still have, you know, the, the opportunity to take it directly to the dump if you have a hard hat and a jacket.
One of the Superior drivers is currently buying a truck and a trailer, and he intends to open up weekly. He says he can't provide the little cart, wheeled carts, he says. But he'll come pick them up most of the week, go in his trailer and haul it off, thirty bucks a month. And I said, where are you gonna, where are you gonna take this to? He says, post-op dump or, there's one in Lockhart.
He's gonna take it over here to post-op?
Well, he named Lockhart also. I don't know what it is unless it's Austin, the TDS. But I said, you can make money at that? He goes, yep. I said, okay. I said, well, I'll let you know. I said, if I'm, I'm with, you know, Waste Connections right now. And I said, I'll see how they go. But I said, I've got your number, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. And there's another place out of Fintress, I think, does the same thing. You bag it, it's in bags, they'll pick it up and put it in their trailer and they'll haul it off. And they've been doing it for a lot of years, these guys when we started. Like I said, I, I need, what I personally want is a place when I have a toilet or a mattress or...
Paint or...
No, you know, if paint's dry, it's not hazardous.
Right, dried paint.
So you take the lid off, let it dry and fill it up. Tires, I need to get rid of tires. Stuff like that.
Just large items.
Stuff like, yeah.
Old exercise.
I have ground on a TV set.
Old TV.
Flying particles and...
Yeah, someone fried our microwave at the store, they put something metal in there, so.
I know the truck will pick up that dumpster because people couldn't do it.
Yeah.
It was too heavy. But, yeah, so I'm, I'm like, whatever the Commissioners' Court. All I can say is, as far as the trash issue, I have a company that picks up my trash and the cost I think is reasonable. Every time I see trash dumped on the side road, I'm gonna call the county and say, somebody dumped boatload of truck tires, or somebody dumped a bathtub in their couch.
Oh, the couch is a long old...
Yeah, and it's, I'm saying, I'm calling to tell you I'll need it picked up and out of here.
Yeah.
And that the county, they'll, they have to deal with that enough. I guess they'll find a solution sometime.
Yeah, Commissioner Seidenberger did, did mention to me, he said, if, if y'all get this going, you need to take a license plate down for some of the people you turn away. Or, he said, because it'll end up on the side road. So, yeah, you know, that's probably experience talking there.
When's that meeting tomorrow?
10 o'clock.
Can you send that information to me? I can likely be there and represent and at least report back.
Absolutely. Um, I just, I got it off the WhatsApp, you can have my, you can have this?
Okay, that'll be perfect. Cause I can work from Seguin tomorrow.
There you go.
So they, they start at 10 o'clock, and it looks like we're one of the first items on the, on the list there.
I'll be there tomorrow and I'll, I'll, I'll attend tomorrow and I'll report back what I, what was said.
You go ahead and tell them whatever you think.
Tell them whatever you think.
Like you think that's not gonna stop me?
But you're so shy.
I know, right?
It's really provocative, you can put our name on it, okay?
That's what Chur and Daniel says about me, but you're so shy, Elena.
All right, awesome, so you're gonna represent. And, I mean, that's as much information as I have. That we know that there was some pushback from the county that are currently utilizing that location. They did not, they were not excited about, you know, sharing that location with, with anybody else.
There were a couple of commissioners that seemed to be fairly excited about it.
Yes, absolutely. However, County Road and Bridge was not.
But it's kind of like, I wanted to object to Seidenberger calling it volunteer, 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 volunteered, manned by volunteers. It was not, it was only manned by employees that were gonna be paid a wage.
Yeah, I mean, it was...
We had, we had one, one volunteer to make sure it was operating smoothly, and then it's like, you know...
And then as it got later, hotter in the year, that, that was...
He was gonna be through.
Yeah.
And then, but it was gonna be self-sustaining and easy to maintain.
All right. So, E, you know, you know as much about any, as anybody about what the thought process was for this, so, yeah. I mean, if I can make it, I will try, but that's a, Tuesdays are a heavy, not a blame, heavy meeting.
I've got a, I've got a meeting that I will, we start with, it's my summer interns and I'll just restart. I'm gonna make it nine instead of ten.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect.
I love my interns. No. Yes, that's what I think is that. That's exactly what you should say. All right. Your future is set.
All right. Item number eight, discussing consider in a local agreement on subdivision regulation. This was, Frank, this was in your...
Originally, but I thought you pretty much had...
I had gotten the staples that are...
That's why I brought my copy of staples.
Well, I am not...
I thought you had some information on it, no?
I have, I have no further information other than what I got from the city of Staples.
Okay, then, are you leaving?
And then from, yeah. And then, you know, what the information that we got from, from Art, you know, last time about that, so.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, E.
And work, and send the process right now.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
No, you didn't call down. No, I just, I thought maybe you had some.
No, I did not.
Okay. All right, then, we'll not, will remove it from the agenda then, next time? Or just want to keep carrying it?
No, I want to keep carrying it on the agenda, yeah.
All right, all right. Where do you think we're gonna go?
I think, well...
Where do you want to go with it?
I would like to, well, let me, I did go over in more detail on the cost layout that, that gentleman had, and most of it seemed to be survey-related. Which the county does not, that, that's not on their fee schedule.
Yeah.
So most of it seemed to be, of that twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars for a small piece of property, most of that seemed to be survey and survey company related.
Well, that's, yeah, I was looking at this too, the boundary survey and plat prep, eighty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And that was the one big item. And the topographical survey for drainage, I think that's...
Re-drain.
That's almost three.
Yeah, for drainage.
Oh, a processing, processing to all departments and staff for utilities. No idea what that is, but...
Yeah, but that seemed to be something also survey-related to me.
So it's like, I mean...
So the county, really, when we're talking about unreasonable costs, it seems like the county, that is, the county did not figure into unreasonable costs when, when you really look at the breakdown. Not that we understand each of those line items, but the actual county costs seem to be fairly reasonable.
Well, I haven't, I haven't read the county's, because it's very lengthy, like ninety-six pages or something, I think, Guadalupe County's subdivision regulations. But I, I just wondering if some of this survey expense is related to a requirement by the county? Maybe not too directly to the person, but to the surveyor, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I hadn't thought of that.
And then we go drainage study prepared by an engineer.
They actually still come from the county.
Thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Well, topographical survey for drainage study is twenty-seven. And then we have drainage study, now that we have a topographical survey, drainage study prepared by an engineer, thirty-five hundred.
See, yeah, I mean, what, I would like to see, I would like to get an idea on there of what is a county mandated item and what is a...
More shopping for a surveyor company than survey company. Cause Art has given us some prices, nothing like this for survey. And, and I still think somewhere in Mabingu, Guadalupe County's subdivision rules.
I mean, you had...
The survey, yes, but you could do it by just meets and bounds. In other words, you can take this survey and that survey, and this is what the meets and bounds are, and this is, and say, okay, we're gonna go with five hundred feet and stop there.
Right. I mean, you had the cost breakdown from the county, and it was, there was anything over a thousand dollars. It was all in the, you know, tens or hundreds.
Curious, I don't know.
I think, yeah. Okay, so we need to get a little bit more firm idea on what we're looking at there. Because if it's, if it's mostly survey-driven, those cost items are mostly survey-driven, then it really is not saving anybody anything for the City of Kingsbury to take over funding. Cause it's gonna be the same price anyway.
We can't, we probably, we may not be able to do it cheaper.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, if we can't, but, you know, cause it, cause it's kind of complicated to get into all of that. I mean, to make those decisions like that eighty-five hundred or like the cost for the, the engineering for a certain drainage way, for instance. You, you might do an ordinance that says, we're gonna approve subdivision flats that have a survey, but we're not going to require the level of engineering detail or study of those aspects like drainage. You might be able to do that, but if you, if you undertake to do so, you might find that all of your experts that tell you will know you shouldn't be plating something without an engineering design, because if there's drainage problems, that's where the highway department is getting trouble.
Right.
And so maybe the city and the county can, and that's why they go in. And I want you to give me also an engineering study of drainage, because then they, I probably justify that as, that way we do a, we have an engineering study and we have real basis to grant that subdivision because it's properly engineered.
Yeah, and I know the city of Staples, they were going with an engineer out, I don't think they had actually used in the app, but that was the plan, they were, had the engineer out of, something that they were, had, headlined it to use in the event. So they do have a separate engineer in mind for that. Again, I don't know how much...
You know, I don't know, I'm simple, I'm a simple person, okay? Except when I start talking, then it gets really... I can understand where you would want drainage survey, you want topographical engineering and all. If you're putting in a Walmart or a shopping mall, because now you've got a huge impervious surface with runoff out every time it rains, it's a flash flood. And where's it gonna go and what's it gonna, what's gonna happen with it? But I can't see that when you buy, well, I don't say a lot, but say five acre, five acre tract, and you put a house and a barn up there. I don't, I mean, it's gonna have some effect, but it's not...
This person is just looking to subdivide.
I know.
I mean, not subdivide, just split, yeah, just divide the property to the people that have been living there for twenty simple years.
As existed.
Yeah.
Not doing something new.
No, just divide the property.
Well, just have the legal status on something that's already been taking place.
I know.
And is an acceptable condition to the community around them.
Yeah.
I don't know what the answer is. I don't know what the answer is.
Okay, I think we, I think...
I think some, I, I think so that it's, part of it is a common sense, yeah, but with the example you're talking about where you just divided it to, there aren't all the consequences of, it's not the same as doing a subdivision of building two-hundred-and-eighty-five houses for one point-two-five acres each. And, and that's got the cost of all kinds of that. That's where you need all of these requirements in your ordinance.
Right.
Say, engineering and all of that stuff, but we could look at the simple ones and say, we're just gonna use common sense, it's been that way, everybody knows the engineering, and nobody's changing anything.
Right.
Yeah.
And the other issue to not look at at all is multifamily, not just business, multifamily.
I'm pretty sure Guadalupe County's subdivision regulations has addressed a family exchange of property like that. I think, I think they make it much more reasonable.
Yeah, they do.
Much more lax, although...
In planning though, it's multifamily versus single family versus industrial.
Yeah.
And which is part of what you, what the City of Kingsbury discussed in terms of should we have a planning solving committee?
Yeah. Well, I think this is something we need to go ahead and leave on there. And, because I don't think I've decided definitely, you know, one way or the other. I mean, Sam brought up some good points there that, yeah, if it's, if it's, we're just talking about dividing and not, I mean, just splitting the property too, you know, because there's two people already living there. That's different than a subdivision with, with multiple homes and streets to be, you know, to be built. Okay, so, still, still some things to consider there. But I don't, I don't think we can decide anything this evening on that. I think we need to look at it a little bit more. Anything further on that one?
Well, you know, not to, not to do that anymore, to our layers and stuff, but you might consider revisiting this in the workshop. This is, this is kind of related to our workshop. And again, if you're going to test, the development committee needs to be in there or you may conserve if you're, go out there and figure out the details, but here's the grand scope that we've got. But I, I think subdivision regulation is gonna fit in with the same topics. It, it may be that it deals with the same grant works proposal, or the community block grant can be used for something like that, although it did say it's water and wastewater priorities.
That's the priorities. I'm, I'm still going like, well, it's our first shot. So we go down like priority three, because that's what we need. Sorry, it's not ACOG's grand scheme, but this is what we need here. And, and this is our first application, but it'll be year five for us, right? So I'm not saying, so if we fail, we fail. We not, don't get the grant, we don't get the grant. Next time around, you know, you called us last time, it's time to step it up. This is year six now, so that was, that was a poignant thing, year six.
And as we talk this through, I don't think this subdivision, inter-local agreement of subdivision regulation really does have a, with your workshop on what kind of block grant project you're going to have.
Well, no, but I think, like you said, the inter-local, the subdivision regulation, the cost for a family that, if I wanna, if I wanna knock ten acres off mine and sell it to my daughter for a dollar, and the other ten acres sold to my son for five, because he's working, it shouldn't cost them, you know, twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars apiece just to have the tax, the taxing space listed. I mean, I've got my twenty-eight, and it's all, it's all marked. And I said, well, I can go from that, from that stake, I can go about five hundred feet, and then I can go five hundred feet and five hundred feet and five hundred feet. Just put the dots on my survey and write it down that on theirs, and it's, there it is. Yeah, I know this, twenty years from now, if they sold three times, they do that, it'll be a mess. It'll be a mess, but that's okay. It's just money, it's just money, it's just tax money. I'm sorry, Sam. I need another, I need someone to...
I've just got this picture of twenty years from now, and, and everybody's arguing about it. They're saying, well, why didn't Frank just get a registered survey group?
Cause it costs money. But if we can't address the cost, that, coming up on our next agenda item pretty quick, if we could address the cost of a subdivision, especially, kind of like a simple one, to the benefit of the property owner, that's... to the benefit of the property owner, um, that's, that's, uh, that's something of value we have to offer to somebody who's a citizen of Kingsbury. Why should I join, why should I be part of Kingsbury? Cause if you ever wanna subdivide, you're gonna thank us, you know? That's, that's one, that's just one. Community grant in a roundabout way, if you live here, you have input on this and, mm, we're live, Mr. Winkler. The future of Kingsbury, what's it gonna be? If it's gonna be a better community, but a city unto itself, but then we can stay a better community, kinda. We can't enforce it strictly, but we don't have to have a city water supply, a city sewer supply. We don't have to have a city electrical system, we don't have to have, we don't have to provide any of that infrastructure that somebody, big companies are gonna wanna come in here. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna build a caterpillar plant here. We wanna build a wastewater treatment plant here. Uh, we need sewer lines, we need water lines, we need electricity, we need roads, uh, it's in the city, y'all got, we don't, we don't offer that.
Mm-hmm.
You're on your own. Well, then we'll just go somewhere else, thank you, sir. If we don't, if we don't offer it to them, then maybe they'll go for it somewhere else.
Yeah.
That's, that's the only thing I can see. That's, but I'm narrow-minded. Okay.
No, that's a, you're, you're following the same plan that we had from the beginning. We don't have an economic development committee in this city, not yet, and, uh, and we don't, and nobody wants one. Cause we're not, I mean, we want business.
Yes.
But to be organic and just come here naturally and without going through lots of grants and.
We have, we have what's downtown, and that has happened by hard work, labor and money of the private individuals. Um, right, right down the street from downtown is a, a factory that is organic and it, person who did own it, who established it, lives here. They build them here, they sell them here nationwide, freezing it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just down the road from me, well, on both, both sides down from me, left, uh, north, east and west. Uh, I've got some company that, they do something with metal. I don't know what they do, but it's not terribly disruptive. It's like, there's not big trucks coming in and out, there's a bunch of people that live there, they work there. They, they raise goats and eat them and they do something with metal. And a guy that owns it lives in Houston.
Yeah.
And, but it's a comp- it's a legitimate, but industrial company. And on the other end from me is, now we're within, there's a guy that's got a shop and on his, on his, he has a house in the back, he's got a shop in the front, he's got a forklift, he's got trucks. He's got gantries, he's got all kinds of equipment up there. And he makes a living out of his front yard and that's, that's good.
Yeah.
You know? And, so I'm okay with that. We have our industry here. We have industry here.
Industry.
And it's, it's, yeah, but it's like, it's organic, it happens.
Yeah. I like that, I like what you're saying there, it's just we want it to happen organically.
Yeah. We don't, I'm not looking for anybody to, don't want a Walmart, don't want a gas station.
Huh?
I don't want a gas station. I don't want a big grocery store. I like, I like the store we have downtown. So far, I have never gone in there looking for something they didn't have. And I've been looking for stuff that I didn't expect to find at all, but it's like, you did? Yeah, we got it, yeah, how many you want?
Well, it's not one of your gas stations, uh, the store is being used for electric fueling.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, I've thought about that.
And either, either or, the reality of transportation and what you need and the fact that I'm giving, giving, selling whatever, gasoline to people because, uh, where's your next gas station? Well, my computer says this car can run up five miles, there ain't one in five miles.
That's right.
Yeah, I, that's why I keep a gas can there. Would be better.
You know, anyways, everybody wants, everybody wants something different.
When you say gas station, I can say gas station convenience store, cause no, I don't really care for that idea. But to have fuel available.
People that, you know, it can get really hot and we still live, get really cold, we still live.
Yeah.
Lots of gas, no gas, we're still gonna live, we'll be, we'll manage, we'll get by.
Yeah, wait till the hurricane comes and, excuse me, going through that.
I'll forget some good rain.
Yeah.
Yes, I am looking for rain, but the issues that happen when they're traveling through here and the, oh, on the, uh, what do you say, mobile fueling stations at the state and the feds put up, they're, they're mobile. Why? Because you don't have any movement.
Yeah.
When one aspect shuts down, fuel is one of those, their availability of help. I'm sorry, that, I lost my attention.
It's an emergency situation, those are like emergency.
Yeah. So I think we should go ahead and keep this on the agenda and we'll do some more, a little bit more digging into, into this, so be better prepared.
But it's not really, are we gonna talk about this at the workshop?
No. Hmm, maybe.
It may come up.
It may come up organically.
It may come up, that's right.
All right, item number nine, discussing consider potential citizens, bill of rights for Kingsbury.
And it was, this was my other thing to offer people, a reason to come to Kingsbury, become a citizen.
Uh-huh.
As, uh, I guess it, we, uh, this is, this is my work copy, sorry.
Uh, what idea?
Wait, wait, six years ago, five years ago?
Yeah.
When this first was mentioned? And, uh, I got real excited and it kinda went away. How do you do it on this?
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you. And I, I understood, I'm just adding. This is a combination though of, uh, things from the Senate Bill seven-ten back in twenty sixteen that, uh, Tony Burton and Art Martinez Navara wrote
Mm-hmm.
to establish Liberty City as a actual type of city in Texas. And they, they defined what Liberty City is, and one of the things they had, so they had a bill of rights in their, their bill, uh, to enact. And they also had a lot of, uh, different, uh, features and qualities of, of a Liberty City. And I kinda took their li- their bill of rights, which to me was pretty much the United States Bill of Rights, Constitutional Bill of Rights. And, uh, some ideas that they had, uh, not for bill of rights, but in operation of a Liberty City, uh, branding of Liberty City. And some ideas of my own that I would be concerned, I would like to see. And just kinda squished them all together here in no particular order, except, uh, yeah. And just wanna let y'all know what I'm kinda thinking about this and there's, you know, if you have an idea for what you think might be a viable bill of rights, which is, it's gonna end up in an ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And I want an ordinance that, like I said, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, we won't be here doing this.
Mm-hmm.
Probably, uh, some of us might. Uh, but, uh, it's gonna be new people, gonna be a whole lot of new people living out here, and they may have different ideas. And the only thing, only idea I don't like is one that is the way we've always done it. So Liberty City is not the way it's always been done, and I would like to protect some of that. I'd like to protect the people that live out here from some of the way we've always done city stuff. Um, and just make it a little harder to fall back on normal political stuff. So I sent a copy of this to Art, uh, cause I sit on the, that Senate bill that they wrote up in twenty sixteen for the Liberty City establishment.
Mm-hmm.
He, I know he has that, and, uh, I'm gonna get with him for a meeting in July, hopefully, to start wrapping some of these up more formally. But I'm looking for suggestions, improvements, ideas, yes, nays. I don't wanna, I don't wanna bring back a whole bunch of stuff that nobody wants to support. So if you have any input or ideas or suggestions, when I was going through it.
Yeah, I need to, I need to preview on this again.
Yeah.
It's been a while, yeah.
The, the one thing I saw that made me think it'd be, yeah, prohibition on adoption and enforcement of zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan. The municipality may not adopt or enforce zoning ordinance or regulations or comprehensive, comprehensive plan that provides for the long-range development of the municipality.
Mm-hmm.
And I said, surely I might be interested in that.
Yeah.
Okay? And I am too, because of this zoning and.
And zoning and.
And subdivision stuff.
If there's a reform, I'm all for it.
But, and I said, and but now, that's not me.
Yes.
That was in the original.
Yeah.
Saying I wanna know why.
Yeah.
You know, what were they thinking when they put that in there? So maybe we do want it, maybe we don't.
All right, so, uh, so this is.
It's just a starting point for me.
Okay.
From my point of view.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and I welcome all the feedback you wanna give me and, you know.
Okay, Frank, you're sorry, this is your, you said this, uh, came from the beginning of the formation?
Yeah, this was put together.
So informal, formal, public document we're reviewing and renewing, but.
No.
Reviving.
Reviving, thank you, thank you, Shirley.
It was never, we never, there was never, uh, you, um.
It was discussed that.
A Liberty City, the creation of a Liberty City as a city with municipality, form of municipality in Texas doesn't exist, it didn't happen. It was, it was, uh, that was a bill presented to the legislature in twenty sixteen to create that. And the idea of Liberty City is kind of part of what started, got this going.
And we are classified as a Liberty City.
We are a Class C.
For a Class C, there is no real classification for Liberty Cities, so what we're trying to do is.
With the understanding of people.
We call ourselves a Liberty City.
Right.
Yeah, and we try to abide by Liberty City.
It makes all the difference in whether you wanna be part of it or not.
Say that again?
The understanding of the people.
Uh-huh.
As Sam said, we call ourselves a Liberty City and understand that to be, partially because of the verbiage used back in twenty sixteen.
Yes, which.
Yes.
A lot of people today have no clue what that means.
Right. Which, like Shirley said, reviving.
Yeah.
Well.
It's a good way to.
Their, their original.
And understanding.
Their original.
Somebody's word.
Description of Liberty City would have a citizens' bill of rights, which I thought was a pretty neat idea.
Mm-hmm.
I'm agreeing that.
Yeah.
And I mean, and we get to go back to this too, also with some years of experience.
And, and to get back in our mind what we are.
Yeah.
And it's to know, I mean, realize what we are, decide on what we, well, what we wanna be and what we are are sometimes two different things.
Yes.
And what I wanted to be and what she wants to be, what she wants, and what you wanted to be might be subtly or dramatically different. But I bet there's at least two or three things that we all agree on immensely, that nail it down to the wall. This is something we do agree on. And, uh, if we can just, I just wanna put up a little roadblock for, uh, uh, Kingsbury City Commission down the road that says, we need to do this, and I want somebody in the audience to go, uh, no, you can't, that is forbidden. Uh, you're not allowed to because of the citizens' bill of rights. And they'll go, well, we're gonna change that, well, it says you have to have a vote of this to do that, and it has to be, you know, an election. They might just say, forget it, and everybody in the audience, I go, yeah, forget that. And that's, that's their prerogative then.
See, I think that, uh, you can call ourselves a Liberty City, but, uh, I thought from the beginning, and I still feel the same way, that the only thing that we're, that's liberty about this Class C municipality is that we are free, uh, we're free to, uh, to be a separate city, and we are free from regulation. And that city cannot regulate our lives and any more than is absolutely necessary to accomplish the general welfare. So again, this is just my opinion of what the scope of Liberty City is. I think it's just to, uh, we exist and, uh, so we're free from regulation and free from, uh, tac- uh, excessive taxation or, or high taxation. So the, I think it's a two-pronged, and, uh, and I, I, you know, this is, uh, goes farther than what my concept of Liberty City is, just, I'll just lay that out.
If you, if you don't type, could you just give me a voice note that basically has your concept of Liberty Cities at, as sixth grade level? That's my favorite.
Mm-hmm, sixth grade, I follow that on here.
Yeah.
I can do anything at sixth grade level.
All right. Hey, I, I just wanna have a, a good understanding of, of what you think.
Well, I don't know that I can repeat myself though.
Oh, I, I know that.
Yeah.
But I, I won't, I won't remember the difference.
It's recorded, uh.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you, if you have.
I still would like to hear from you.
Yeah.
I mean, I like more elucidation from you.
Thank you, sir.
I wanna get deeper into your thought process here, cause I really value your thoughts.
Thank you, Jessica.
So.
Yes.
So.
Each has a part.
If we can, this is another item to include on next month's, uh, to go through some, some review of what we have, review of what.
Additions, ideas.
Ideas, and then.
Uh, something you wanna just try to lock down that is basic to your concept of a Liberty City
Mm-hmm.
and what we're trying, what, I think, I feel like we're trying to set an example of what it should be like, not the way it is.
Yeah.
Uh, I.
Again, we, we've got a few years under our belts here, so we can really kind of.
Yeah.
You know, we're a little bit more, uh, can be a little bit more mature in our thoughts about, you know, really what we want for, um, the city.
Yeah. But I think, and like I said, on, on the, uh, the development committee, what are they called now?
K D's.
K D's, yeah. That's, that's, to me, that's one more additional thing, reason for being part of Kingsbury. You know, if, uh, if you wanna have, you know, a true voice in, in what's happening to you, not, not government, but what's happening to you by government uh, and you, and in your community, this is, this is a good place to be, it's a good place to be. Uh, I feel like if I went to the game and complained about something, that you're like, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I don't want that. I don't want that, I don't want this place to ever be like that. I want it to be run by the people.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Um, so we'll have this in the, to review our ideas and if we don't like, wanna workshop it at some point.
Yeah.
But again, July is kind of.
Well, yeah.
Um, item number ten, discussing consider plans for, uh, Corona virus local fiscal recovery fund except for grant. Uh, we have to have, you know, some funds, a project, uh. I, it, the date is December thirty-first here, I'm not sure if that's correct or not.
I looked it up again and, um, yes, we do need to oblige it by December thirty-first.
Okay, we have a, a project outlined or?
It has to be turned in to somebody at the state level, right?
Y- yes.
It's running this for the, uh.
Uh. Yeah, it, yeah, the, the people, we have to, uh, turn in our updates too. Uh, the S L F R F. Um, and I will, uh, just say I have, uh, well, I mean, we're going for, you know, particular goals and that's just, it's been really difficult to, to meet those goals. I mean, to, to, to reach, uh, what we would like to use these funds for. I have reached out to, uh, more property owners, uh, to, to, to see if they would be interested in, uh, uh, selling or using, huh?
Property?
Yeah.
Just, okay.
Um, I know that, um, you know, one of our goals or objectives is, is, uh, water. Uh, you know, as far as the, being able to.
Emergency.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, and one of our goals is to have a, a central, uh, community, uh, offices, you know, uh, where we have, it's a fire department, where we have like a, our own, um, city buildings, city offices, a, a central place where we have, we can, you know, communicate from, and, and, so that's another goal, so I have, again, reached out to some more property owners, um, and, uh, well, I, you know, that's fairly recent, so I haven't put anything back yet, uh, I mean, if, if we could...
Can I ask about where you're, what area you're living in?
Downtown-ish.
Downtown-ish?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yes, downtown-ish.
Okay.
I have in other places had problems figuring out, it's like the other, uh, what do you consider downtown, so we're talking railway?
Okay, what is, what do you consider downtown-ish?
I'm assuming, or, or projecting, what is downtown?
I guess I would think it's a few blocks around real...
Yeah, it's the real estate deals, but, like I said, can you give us a downtown-ish boundary of like, Howie Ninety, about either side? Yeah?
Either side, yeah.
Okay.
But it's currently, or could be...
Past the fire station?
Currently or could be, you know?
It's a pretty good size, it's a pretty good jump.
The city of Kingsbury is still drawn out, that's why I say, you know, some people get, "I'm in Kingsbury."
You have a Kingsbury address, you're not in Kingsbury.
I made it, where I'm gonna be a high municipality population area, relatively...
I would want it to be, yeah, in a centrally located area of, I don't, I don't want it out at my house, I would donate the land if it would be, uh...
But it's like, why would I be donating the area it is?
Four miles down the road.
Yeah, thank you, that's why...
So, yeah.
It says in the city limits.
It's in the city limits, yes, it is, but, but I would, I, I would be much more...
We've been in a new gate too, just for them.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, but it's not a, you know, it's a, it's kinda hidden off, you know?
I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm not attacking anybody, trying to find negoti, you know, find a common ground here, so, you said there's no problem with that, the gate, but what is the problem then?
Of what?
Of having it there.
Oh, at my, at my house?
Not your house.
Oh, I mean, our, my property down there is four or five miles from Kingsbury proper.
And access.
Four or five miles to get here.
And access.
Yeah, kidding me.
Think about the high water houses, think about the highways that are close by, there's so many...
Yeah, okay, so I'm looking at some, I'm looking at some things that are in, you know?
In, in possibilities, yeah, that's fine.
Of the blinking light.
Big enough to put, big enough to put a building on.
Yes, yes, so working light.
Big enough to put in a septic system? No, hold on, I wanna, I wanna do this, I wanna do this, what I think is to the benefit and the best interest of the people that live out here, but big enough to put a building on, the bigger the better, but, that can use a whole lot, uh, we need a well, because emergency purpose is on it, but we need a rainwater collection system, cause the well is for emergencies, the rainwater collection is normal, everyday operation.
Right.
Okay, and we have composting toilet, because...
Septic is out of the question as well.
Septic is, septic's not good downtown, I mean, I don't know if it is or not, but I'd just like to see a composting toilet, and if it's really okay to use, then it's okay to use, I, I said, I said, "The composting toilet?" She said, "I don't want a comp, a composting toilet out here," I said, "No, it's, you have it inside your house, composting toilet?" It would stink, I said, "I don't think so," she goes, "Well, I don't want one," and I said, "You've never been in one, have you?" "No," and I said, "I haven't either, well, I think I have one."
I've watched videos of them.
But, so, uh, the rainwater collection?
County doesn't authorize it.
Yes.
Yeah, they, yeah, they, yeah, they're, they're absolutely...
You know, they have, they have a, a list, well, they say, I think they have a list of approved equipment, facilities, companies, but I don't think they follow their list, I don't think they do, it's just if it meets...
Yeah, they're absolutely...
It's back and forth, it's a good old boy sort of, but not totally, because it is written, so they have to...
Fifty years from now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hire bumper, bumper houses down every street, crystal clear, I don't wanna get, I want rainwater and septic system, I don't wanna, I don't wanna flood this area with, with sewage, if I can do a composting toilet, uh, and make it, ma, and have it there where people can experience rainwater, can experience a composting toilet, experience, uh, uh...
Sustainability, yeah.
Solar, or wind, the generator, gas power generator, uh, minimize your electricity usage, that's the main thing, LED light bulbs, and here's...
Benchmark for...
Yeah, as, as cheap, as, as efficient as we can, and then every month we can dispose, here's our electric bill, it's like, it's nothing but fees, because we belong to the co-op, but actually usage is zero, or, it was like, one kilo, one, you know, three hundred watts, yeah, so we rent, we charge the phone per day.
Yeah.
Or put in a solar panel.
Put in solar panels?
Sell your electricity back to G V D C.
Or, and put in a charging station, I think, I think, um, it's okay, put in a charging station, and, uh, put us on the map, charging station between here and there, you know, I don't know, we had one in Kingsbury, so, you know, things, but, yeah, if, cause if I was doing it all again, when we moved out here, I would have, I would have solar water heater, I would have rainwater collection, I probably wouldn't have a composting toilet, but, if I, give it a couple more years, and I say, "Yeah, I'll try that," uh, yeah, and then, I'm thinking like, man, why would you have a well, why would you have, uh, crystal clear water? La Voile, you got a new refrigerator, and he was, he said, "Put in a water line," and he didn't have anything convenient for his ice maker, and I said, "Just, you got outside lines," he says, "That's off the well," he says, "That's groundwater," he says, "They use groundwater for their outside watering stuff," but their house runs on rainwater.
Right.
And he says, "Rainwater tastes good," he said, "And there's no iron in it?"
Yeah.
"There's no, there's no crud in it?" He said, "It's clean."
Sediment?
Uh-uh, he says, "I want rainwater in my ice maker," so...
Maybe things exist in most systems, but it's filtration, which is one that's had because it is a very good system.
Yeah.
Only because he's my neighbor and I know what's taking place.
But it's, it is, it's the ideal, on, uh, have you been down to Gander Slough going towards the under, railroad underpass?
Mm-hmm.
You see those, that little subdivision they put in with all the wells? I bet they drilled ten, fifteen wells, they got little five hundred gallon, or I guess it's five hundred gallon tanks, and I guess they're gonna branch out to all their lots, and I said, "But, that's a lot of groundwater getting sucked up."
Yeah, it is.
And I said, "And, and they're gonna pay a monthly fee, I guess they're gonna pay a fee for that water, I don't know how they're doing it, but..."
Uh, some of the properties split, I believe, it is four properties to a well, and it's, uh...
They've got it marked off, like, and they've got a number of properties, I thought it was five acre lots.
And that's where we get back to the issue of, uh, flooding, zoning, and what the county has failed to follow up on, and I'm sorry that we digress so much, and I really appreciate the time of everybody, including us online.
And that's, yeah, a piece of property was built, and I'd like to see all that stuff anyway.
That's what I, that's what I'm pursuing.
That's the future, I think that's the future life in Texas.
I think, and that's what I am pursuing, now.
Yes, ma'am.
Whether any of that will come to fruition before December thirty first is, I can't say that, I'm not working on it, man.
Is it, well, you haven't heard back from anybody, but...
No.
Thank you.
I'm working on it.
We, we have enough money, we can make a good down payment.
Yes, we could.
There we go, and we can continue to make payments.
Yes, we could.
All right.
But, it's just, yeah.
It's gonna happen.
All right, uh, so...
Thank you very much.
Uh, last item is adjourned.
All right, eight eleven, we're done, thank you.
So much.